Go ahead.
Councilmember Alfieri. I'll come back to her. Councilmember Case?
Here.
Councilmember Neal?
Here.
Councilmember Path?
Here.
Councilmember Zulawaga?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Alfieri, are you with us? Okay.
Would you see her?
I don't see her, so I just see her name, but.
She may be on her way to be here in person. She's sure that she might be doing that.
Okay.
With me.
We know.
She may be here shortly.
When she comes here, I'll mark her present.
Right.
Go ahead and do pledge of allegiance, and Rob could put the flag up for the viewers.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands.
With liberty and justice for all.
Oh, that was interesting.
Yeah, you gotta stay on the lead, right?
This is what you've been missing.
All right, and next would be ceremonies, presentations, and appointments, and we have none this evening. Additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? I don't believe we have any. And next, onto consent calendar.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Labar. This evening's consent calendar, we have one item, and that is the approval of the March 18th, 2021, regular city council meeting minutes. And I believe there's some discussion that we'd like to hold regarding the minutes. Correct, sir?
Yes, correct, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you. I have a couple items that I brought to Suzanne's attention. And then she shared her challenge of keeping the pieces according to the guidelines she has, and yet also to accurately reflect what's in the minutes. So I thought if it would be all right. Suzanne, could you review for us what we have agreed to, what the minutes should look like?
Absolutely.
And then how that's grown?
Sure.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity. In the council's rules and procedures, which were adopted on May 7th, 2020, it was the second adoption with the amended changes. It talks about the minutes under the council's procedures, and it says, "The city clerk shall prepare action minutes for all regular and special meetings." Action minutes will minimally include the following items, and in your procedures it lists: the place of the meeting, the time the meeting starts and ends, which members of council were present, if relevant, any absences, the fact that a quorum was present, the text of all main motions taken up by the council and their disposition, passed, failed, referred to a committee, postponed, et cetera, any points of order that were made and their resolution, any other notations required under the charter code or these rules, and if council went into executive session, the time of entering and the time of leaving such session. So very basic actions in the minutes. The minutes have grown since we've had this new council, and because every council meeting, different council members will ask me to put different things in the record, and respectively, I will do that. And so we're at about eight pages of minutes tonight in particular. And so in these minutes, we don't reflect what every single comment is made. They're not verbatim minutes. And I offer up a solution to council, and I'd like to see if it's acceptable to you. I'd like to go back to doing the action minutes that your policy and procedures guide me to do, and add under each item, agenda item, the timestamp on the video. So perhaps if we are doing the consent calendar, and there is some discussion, and I will reflect the motion and who made the motion, who voted. But if someone wanted to go listen to the discussion on the minutes, the timestamp would be there, and they could click on that and go directly to that and listen to the verbatim discussion that occurred. So in speaking with Councilmember Zulawaga, we thought we would bring this to you and see what council thinks of that idea. I mean, at any time, you can amend your policy and procedures, but it will help me with, well, you didn't put what I said in the minutes, and you didn't put what I said, and I meant to say this, and that kind of thing. So I'm just looking for some guidance from the city council.
So I'm just gonna quickly say, I think that's perfect, because I think our minutes are supposed to be short and sweet, also for legal reasons. So I appreciate that recommendation very much. And then I'll go ahead and, Kevin.
I just would like to know how much time and burden that puts on your position as the clerk in recording and finding all those timestamps.
None, because Rob doesn't know yet, but he's going to. He's going to assist me. He's gonna keep the agenda back there, and as we start, he has the recording.
Okay.
As we start each topic, he's gonna write down the time.
As long as it doesn't add undue burden, I'm okay with it.
It will actually lessen the burden, instead of typing eight pages of minutes. Just to find, it'll be easier.
Well, and action minutes are absolutely appropriate for several reasons that the mayor pro tem referred to, and we always have the video and the audio, video/audio recording for anyone to refer to. So it makes perfect sense. Thank you.
And that's the rub that I've discovered.
And, yes.
Oh, go ahead. Stephanie, if you want to chip in, go ahead.
I remember the discussion that we had a year, year and a half ago. I'm not sure exactly when about moving to action minutes versus meeting minutes. We had an issue with our audio and video that's been improved since then. We have had many years of recordings that were inaudible because of our audio and visual. And so although those were referred to as the official meeting minutes, it was really hard to actually differentiate what was being said in the meeting because of the lack of audio and video that we had had during that time. I do remember there was an incident just over a year ago where we lost 20 minutes of a city council meeting that was alleged to have not been recorded to the cloud, and that video is lost. So while I'm okay to go with the idea that the video and audio is the official record, when council members request that there are certain instances within these meetings that are recorded in the actual official record and the written record, I absolutely support that 100% because we have lost some audio and video that, again, less than a year ago, 20 minutes of a video was completely lost and is no record of it that exists at this point. And it was simply excused as an issue that was simply not recorded to the cloud and could not be retained, so.
And I agree with that, but the minutes did still exist. But the minutes typically are short and sweet, and that is for business purpose and legal purposes as well. The minutes don't retain everything a council member says verbatim. So I just want to remind council of that.
It's not a perfect world.
Right.
Stuff's gonna always happen.
Zulawaga has wanted to speak, so please, please do.
So one other little part of this equation. So my concern is, and the reason that I brought this up to Suzanne about the two issues that I had, is because one was, what's going on the record is the part that people see. There's the part that is actually just as valid that wasn't said, and this particularly was in terms of public comment, that wasn't said, that wasn't put in, which puts it in a perspective that if it goes unchallenged, my concern is, then the record is this slant, rather than having a balanced perspective on it. So that was the thing that I saw in terms of the public comment section. And the other one, I've since talked to Kip about, but it was the, when I made a motion for the water taps, the increase in water taps, he also agreed that we are not raising rates on the citizens. So I said, as long as the motion includes that. Well, I've since seen that we're gonna cover tonight that fact that he's not increasing rates, and we have an ordinance to that effect to address tonight. So from that one, that one is not an issue.
Sure, okay.
But the last part, if I could ask Michael to tell us about the new software we have and how that will play into retaining a better public record.
Sure, and I appreciate that. And Suzanne and/or Rob may know a little bit more about it, but we had come to you all at the end of last year, talking about a software called Civic Clerk. That's an e-agenda system. And one of the features of that system, as I understand, is automatic timestamping as you transition between agenda items. And so I don't know if in the minutes it would tag the times on the video recording. If you were to access the minutes online, presumably, you could go, it would take you automatically to that segment of the video. But our staff can correct me if I'm off.
You're not off.
Okay. So to Councilmember Case's earlier point about workload, we appreciate that, of course. Here, hopefully in the next month or two, we will have a more automated system to ease the accessibility for everybody to find exactly what you're talking about.
That's a great benefit to our citizens. Thank you.
I do have a question. How does that accommodate or be able to accommodate for the ability, the excuse that we got for missing those 20 minutes of a meeting that was literally not recorded? Does that somehow create a stopgap for that not happening? Because when the question was posed, what happened to those meeting minutes that are our official record? That when we decided to go to action minutes instead of the video/audio recording as being the official record? How does that create a gap? Is there some sort of assurance that we're not going to lose any sort of recording that we were told was simply not uploaded and recorded to the cloud that we now have lost indefinitely?
So I think that with this, it offers some more redundancy. So we will have, not only will we have Rob in the back recording it, as we have now, we also have Zoom recording it. We now have Facebook Live, so it's recorded on Facebook Live, and it will also be recorded through Civic Clerk. So we will have numerous outlets, so to speak, that will record it, that will offer redundancy to us. If one fails, we'll have another one that should be able to cover it.
On the old website, I was able to find prior council meetings very easily. I confess, I can't find them on the new one. Now, I don't pretend to be electronically literate, per se, but I'm not finding that easy. And so my concern is, I recognize, we are going into transition. We're transitioning into tech, you know, in a stronger way. But I think there's still a little bit of uncomfortability. And maybe if it's gonna take two months to get this, like, kinda teed out and figured out, I would just suggest maybe we continue with a little more. If council is uncomfortable with the part, we review it, and we move on. And then we'll probably get to the point where we go, oh, good, it's all, it's tight. Because this new television stuff, it's fabulous. It's fabulous. So I don't know what the recording side is. So I would just suggest that we just, now that I know all the pieces of it, it'll be easier for me to go, oh, okay, I see it. But for the one that I requested for you, I would like us to take that back. I would like that reviewed, the first part.
Okay, so then what I would ask.
Kips is not, I'm fine with what he's.
So I would ask then for you, for the record.
Okay.
Tonight, to let me know what the issue is that you had with the minutes.
Okay. With the minutes, we had a comment from, I guess I'll say who it's from, from Tony Perry. And he was challenging one of our council members. And I read it into the record. I've seen it in two newspapers, so that's pretty consistent with what his point of view is. And I asked him a question. I said, so why are you doing this? And I don't see that reflected in the record, and I would like to see it. Because it gave an insight into why he's going through with this when the attorney general says, there's no issue here. So I just would like to see that that's reflected, so that it doesn't look like council has said, oh, yeah, that's fine.
So I have two comments to that, if you don't mind, Suzanne. One is, just to clarify, it's not the attorney general. They have nothing to do with a case like that. It would be the district attorney.
Was it a district attorney?
Just so you know.
I thought it said in the paperwork it was.
I don't know, but an attorney general would not investigate someone's residency. And then I'm gonna go ahead and throw it over to the city attorney briefly to go ahead and give your legal opinion on minutes, how lengthy they should be, what should be captured, and what the purpose of them is legally for council.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Mayor Protem. So first of all, as Suzanne explained in your policy right now, you have that it will be action minutes, and that's usually the case for these minutes. What I hear as a potential concern is certain council members reaching out to the clerk to have, you know, the minutes reflect, you know, a statement that they made or that they heard, and then maybe not others, because they didn't think to do that. And then it's inconsistent or could show a little bias unintentionally. And it's always important for things not to be taken out of, so that's one thing. And it's also important for things not to be taken out of context when the clerk's doing their best they can summarizing something that someone can then take against the city instead of really just listening to it for themselves on the video. So, you know, it's almost like you should either do a full court report, have a full court reporter transcribing every word, or the action minutes. And with the timestamp, I think it's a really good solution, you know, to allow transparency without allowing a human being, anyone, you know, interpretation of what they're gonna write, or that different council members, again, are coming to her and not others. So I think from a legal, that's just, yeah, that answers your question.
Well, and that goes back to the point that the council as a whole gives direction to staff and not individual council members.
Here is my question. The Civic Clerk program, what does that incorporate? Does that allow us to transcribe all of the city council meetings and minutes and words? What is the capacity of it?
Can I throw in here on something like, real quick? I have my hand up, so I'll just go ahead and jump in.
Sure, and let me just apologize really to the council members on Zoom. I can't see whether you guys have hands up or not. And so if you need to chime in, please don't hesitate, because I have no idea that you're waiting patiently to speak. And Suzanne's trying to help me with that, but I'm not always looking at her, so she can't always get my attention. So please, Councilmember Path, go ahead.
Yeah, so the city attorney's recommendation is incredibly important to understand. Meetings, meeting minutes are, you know, for the purpose of just making sure that all official actions are noted properly, and anything ancillary to that, that has legal bearing, is noted there. I think we can, you know, taking into account Councilmember Alfieri's concern about a meeting that had some minutes taken out of the video, you know, that can serve as a non-official means of giving transparency to the public of what happened at meetings when they can't attend. And they can fill in the gaps themselves, and I think it's appropriate to allow them to do that. I think if we make these minutes entirely lengthy and particular, not only the legal issues that can come up because of that do we need to avoid, but really, the purpose of the minutes as an official document is to note action items taken. It's not intended to be for anyone's ability to make sure everyone knows all the issues involved. Those are things that can be taken care of in the public square. But minutes have always been intended and always had the purpose of providing the legal background of actions that any legislative body took, and were never intended to do anything beyond that. So I think the degree to which we can restrain ourselves to that and try to avoid anything beyond that, I think, is incredibly important for us to note. And then leave the transparency issue of the details to the video that was there. I think as a council, if we have concerns about how that video is handled, I think we need to take action in that regard and direct city staff to do whatever we feel is appropriate to make sure that that transparency is full. But in terms of an official document, I think if we dig into little items on the minutes, it's useless. It's confusing to those who don't have context. And again, I repeat, the purpose of the minutes is to make sure official actions are noted properly.
Thank you, Councilmember Path. Councilmember Neal, did you have anything you'd like to add?
You actually asked my question that I had initially. And I actually would like to hear Ms. Williams, our city attorneys, can you, one more time, give us the definition of an action minute? Because I think I understand it. I've listened to all of this. I've read the charter and everything. But just one last time, because to Stephanie's, Ms. Alfieri's point, being a technician, I don't trust new software. I spent my career in IT. So when you roll something out, be prepared for it not to work. And I just want to make sure that when we do start relying heavily on this software, that we have tested it, and I just want to know that the action minutes are gonna be adequate. Thank you.
Yes, so action items or action minutes, a good way to explain it is to look at your agenda and the items that you're voting on or giving direction on would be an action item. In particular, your council rules or procedure explain that your minutes will include place of meeting, time the meeting started and ended, when members were present, fact that a quorum was present, text of the main motion, how you voted, points of order, other notations under the code and rules that are necessary, and that if you went to executive session. That's the purpose of the minutes, is to record that. Other commentary that you, council or public, say, well, it's important, it's not something that needs to be necessarily recorded in terms of, you haven't made an action, you haven't made a formal action as a governing board. Does that answer your question?
It does. So as I look at last council meeting's minutes, paragraph 6A, because that's the one that Mr. Zulawaga was talking about, almost all of that would not be there, correct?
Yeah.
That's correct.
Correct.
It would just be a reference to a timestamp for us to go out and watch the video if you really wanted to see what happened for 6A.
What my, Councilmember Neal, what my training and what I've learned, what it would say is, for instance, do you remember the doctor that came and spoke last council meeting? It would just say, Dr. Muthana Yucob was present, and he shared some concerns of high levels of kaidium. And then we wouldn't have any discussion, you know, back and forth, the banter that went on, and the citizens weighing in. None of that would be there. I do have to mention each person that does come and speak, public comment, and just what topic they spoke on.
Okay, so it might be a one-liner instead of a paragraph?
Correct.
All right, I think I have a very good understanding. And I share Councilmember Alfieri's concern about lost tapes.
And that is, my concern is that to do simply action minutes, which would be okay if we didn't have the issues we've had with the audio and video, maybe it will get better. Maybe it will prove to be the right way of recording our meetings. I'm just not to that point of believing that it is substantial at this point for providing a public record. I mean, I have watched any number of council meetings that I can count at this point where the audio has not been audible, where the video has been black. And that's the thing, is that's the transparency that happens in public government, that to be able to understand not just the decisions that were made by our government, but the reasons why, and the discussion that was had to come to those decisions. Again, the 20 minutes that have lapsed, that are nonexistent within that council meeting that happened a year or so ago, it was a very contentious issue that is gone. It simply doesn't exist. It has disappeared. And for public transparency, I feel like that is what needs to happen, for the public to understand why council has come to the decision it has and made the decision it has. And that goes back to my question of, what is the capacity of the city clerk program to transcribe all of the audio and visual that has been recorded? And how can we be as transparent as possible? Because action minutes just tell you how someone has voted on an issue. It does not tell you how they came to that decision and what information was presented to lead them to that discussion or to that decision. And that's been my problem. I have witnessed it for many years in not being able to attend city council meetings and going back and reviewing city council meetings and video and not being able to clearly hear speakers, city council members, the mayor. Again, I hope our improvements in audio and video have been able to cure that issue. But I'm not to the point of being able to have absolute confidence in the fact that that is the official record without having some sort of written minutes get up.
Let me just clarify. We do have written minutes, and the action minutes are what we are legally required to follow and provide to the public, and that is being done. The video recordings are the existential ability to provide that record to the public. But let me refer one more time to our city attorney to make sure that this council is at least abiding by the law in providing the action minutes as a public record to our citizens.
Can I make a comment before she comments again?
Sure.
I'd just like to say, we have redundancy in place.
We do.
We have four different recordings of the meetings. We have it on YouTube. We have it on Facebook. We have it on our Zoom recording. And we have it on what Rob is doing now, which will be transitioned into the new clerk software, which is being used by many agencies around the country. And I know we'll have hiccups bringing it onboard. We always do with new software, but I'm sure that staff will work through that. And with that, I would like to ask, while we're referring to the city attorney, if council can direct the clerk to revise these minutes to be action minutes and bring them back to us at the next meeting?
Correct.
Thank you.
And one other issue, too, is if you want the council meetings transcribed verbatim, that is not the clerk's job. So if you want to spend taxpayer dollars on hiring a transcriber because you want every word typed, because you don't trust the audio/video recordings, then that is something that council can consider. I don't support it, but it is an issue that you can consider if that is your grave fear. Just to let.
I might add at this point. But let's.
I'm asking is, if the city clerk program that we are paying for has that capacity? Because although Councilmember Case says that we have this redundancy, we have a very contentious issue that happened within city council. 20 minutes of it is missing. It completely is not.
Councilmember Alfieri, we completely understand what you're saying. That point is definitely driven home with us. I'm gonna let the city attorney speak. I'm gonna let Councilmember Path speak. And then we're gonna go ahead and move on from this topic. Ms. Williams?
Oh, yeah. Well, I mean, you asked if these minutes, you know, comply with the law, and that is the case. And I don't think that's the councilwoman's, Alfieri's, position. It's more that she's. And I don't think that's the councilwoman's Alfieri's position. It's more that she wants to do more transparency. I would suggest you do have, I would, you you do a resolution that you have adopted. Resolution 2020 863 where it directs staff that you have adopted to do action minutes. And if you want to have a further discussion on that to amend, that's a, you know, just my suggestion, that's another. A time to discuss, not, I'm not trying to tell anyone what to do, but. This, I am telling you that this is your policy that you've adopted via resolution and if you want to amend it, you have to amend it via via resolution.
Thank you. Councilmember Path.
I might add at this point, let's just a little historical perspective here. We have a wealth of technology at this stage in our history as a country. That this discussion would not even be conceivable, probably even 30, 40 years ago. So the the purpose, the reason that we have legally set in structures. The way we do in most areas of government in this country that give action. Minutes and you can always expand on those in in minor ways. But is the the time consumption that it would take to have detailed information. Was really reserved for big issues like the Constitutional Convention and for court proceedings. Where you had stenographers and and expert people who could do shorthand and stenography. Those are typically there. We can always go to that if we want to, but I I don't think I would even. Support that. I think we're having the discussion because we have the technology nowadays to put all of these items. Out there publicly. So even when we have those hiccups. Which are concerning in this particular case that councilmember Alfieri is talking about. I think what we need to do as a councils be responsible to reprimand city in some mild or harsh fashion if it becomes a problem. And it is our responsibility to do that because we, it's a matter of transparency. But this issue of video items and such, that's a separate matter from the discussion of minutes. And it is appropriate to use the traditional methods that existed before this technology for minutes. And then find other ways to direct city staff to be comprehensive and faithful in their approach. To the technology. So, you know, you can always have a excuse of a technology blip. If you have a city staff somewhere in this country that. Has some motive to keep things out of that transparency record. You know, that that can happen. And I think then the legislative body's purpose is to reprimand that in some form or fashion. But I think we've initiated new technology, which, you know, I I think is superior to what we were at when that happened last year. I think we need to watch it and observe and see where we're at and then decide what we do from there. As it is right now, I think action minutes that might have some fill in items for clarity. Is all that we need to do. And I think we're putting an undue burden on to go beyond that. But I do think we need to keep our eye on how the technology is going and make sure the public is aware of what's going on and can access it when they want to.
Thank you, Councilmember Path. Suzanne, I did see that you.
Oh, thank you, Mayor Protem. One other thing, if council will recall, when that issue did occur. With whatever happened with the upload, Mayor Carr at the time was upset, very upset with us. And what he chose to do is he brought his own.
Councilmember Path, your mic wasn't muted.
He brought his own digital recorder and he would record.
Sorry.
Himself.
Yes. So my question goes back to what is the capacity of the city clerk? Program and software to record all of the meeting minutes? Is it capable of recording all of the audio and visual of these meetings? So that that is a additional redundancy should the video audio fail during our meetings?
Miss Mayor Protem, I would suggest that if Ms. Alfieri would like more detail about the software that she scheduled a meeting with staff. So her concerns can be satisfied.
Unless Suzanne, do you have a yes or no?
Here for the benefit of the public as well because it is their information. And their entitlement to the the actual record of our meetings.
Okay, what I would ask is if you would give me the opportunity to research that a little bit and bring that information back to you. I'm not there to answer whether it can fully just transcribe a council meeting. I know it can record. I know it could set up minutes, do different things like that. I don't know if it does a full transcription. Because that's not something we even asked them when we were pricing it out.
Okay, I will wrap back around to you and ask this question at the next public meeting as well. So the constituents can know the answer as well.
Sure. So can I get a motion?
I will move to approve the minutes as presented.
Is that the consent calendar?
I thought you were going to have us take it back and make them action minutes.
Can we do that?
You can amend and clarify your minutes to reflect what, yeah.
Okay, I will amend my motion to ask the clerk to revise the minutes. To make them action minutes and we will rely on the recordings, the redundant recordings of that meeting for the detail. And I will make that a motion.
I second.
Thank you. Alfieri?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
LeBar?
Yes.
Neil? Councilmember Neil?
Yeah, I know, I'm thinking.
Okay.
Do you want music?
That's how I feel every time, Councilmember Neil.
Go back and redraft these things to a lesser. Stand less lesser amount of detail and then come back so that they are now just action notes versus what we currently have.
Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
I'm going, I'm going to return them to you the next council meeting as action minutes. That's what we're voting on right now.
I vote no.
Okay. Path?
I vote yes with. New consideration to the fact that. Some, some of the items that would be removed relate to me.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five one. Thank you.
Mayor Protem. So to complete this, what I hear is there has been a mistrust with the way that mistrust and. Poor technology. I mean, thanks to Rob over the last, what, two months? We have come from. Tearing our hair out about Zoom and seeing little tiny dots up here to having this excellent quality. So.
Yeah.
Can, I wouldn't mind if it's okay with with Michael and with council to have us present to us. What is, what is a public see? So they they're not here at this meeting. They want to see what happened. Can you do a demonstration and show us at another council meeting what they actually, where they have, where they can go and where they can get this? And where it's a reliable, consistent and they have a sense of confidence that we've raised the bar on this whole issue of of the recordings. And that would be, I think, a way of dissolving that that the the angst about the.
I'm, I'm sure Michael would be happy to do that.
Yeah, we can do that, of course. Well, well, we we might ask you a few questions just to clarify. But yeah, absolutely.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
All right. Moving on. You're welcome. Now we are onto public comments.
Forty.
On items not on the agenda. And I'm going to ask Suzanne, do you have, do you have anyone signed up?
We've received no one, no one signed up and I do not have anybody signed up online either to speak.
Okay, and then I saw some hands in the audience who who wanted to. And remember, this is right now is public comment on items not on agenda. So as long as it's not on the agenda, you can.
And I'm going to grab the sheet.
Okay, so if you guys wouldn't mind, those of you who have your hands up, if you wouldn't mind just putting your names on the sheets as well. Rob? So. Suzanne, I see him. I see him.
Suzanne.
We have Jim and we have another young lady in the back who would like to sign up as well. Oh, good. Okay, great. As soon as I get the list, we'll get going. I know, it's fine. I haven't been in here in literally a year, so.
Welcome back.
Thank you. I'm glad to be back.
So Mayor Protem, the first person signed up is Jeff Baldwin. And he has an item, he would like to speak on the work session.
Okay, and I see that he's not currently in, oh, I see, they're coming back. And I'd just like to remind everyone, you do have five minutes and I do watch the clock the moment you begin, so. Jeff, would you like to come up and speak? Are you prepared? Sure.
Okay, so we have Jim Olson.
Okay.
Thank you, council. Jim Olson, I live at 1301 US Highway 24 in Woodland Park. I just wanted to quickly address the work session very quickly about the 180 day occupancy limitation in the campgrounds. Just for a little, little clarity, before you go into your next work session. I just wanted to remind you that it is an RV park. And our owners of the RV parks are very studious and keep keeping a well-run park. They're very strict in managing and there have been many times that customers, customers have been asked to leave. Because of the way they. Carried themselves at the RV, RV park. I like to suggest three items that you might consider as requirements. And for an RV. And these are requirements that Willan RV Park has. Number one is that it's a licensed vehicle. Number two, that it's insured. And number three, that the vehicle needs to be able to be moved. And my current RV insurance requires that I have to move it once a year. And I do, I take my home for vacation at least once or twice, twice a year. Whether I stay in the park for 180 days for or for three years. What is the difference as long as the RV occupying the space meets those those requirements? It's licensed, it's insured and it is mobile. If those requirements are met, then I see that the due diligence of the RV owners and the city has been done. You might ask, what are the reasons to stay long term? I would suggest there there's possibly two. One is you're traveling full time. And number two would be that you're in transition in in the Woodland RV Park. There are folks who go to Caris Bible College and there are people like me who are transitioning to retirement. And planning to retire and leave. And I can tell you from experience, selling everything you own. And trying to learn how to live in a a full-time lifestyle takes time. You might think it's easy, but it's not. And it takes more than 180 days to get that all figured out. In closing, we have in our community, three vital businesses who generate city revenue. And make us a destination point for many visitors. They are well-run and managed to high standards. And they, we should let them manage the businesses. Rather than emphasizing the 180 days, we could be making sure that the RV parks are operating as an RV park. And if that is happening, then government's job is done. If you need input from somebody who has lived full time for three and a half years in a tin can, I live in my 218 airstream. I'd be more than happy to give you real life experience and help you understand what a potential full-time lifestyle style requires. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. With Ms. Vicky Houston.
Do you want to circle back to to Jeff real quick?
Jeff, do you want to go first? I'm sorry, ma'am. We'll get there. We'll get there.
Since we've really got technical here tonight, I just want to bring this down to. The people who stay in our RV park like Jen. Okay. And I also want to clarify about this 180 days and all the states and so forth. We have researched.
May I interrupt for just a moment, please? Jeff, can you stand closer to the microphone? It's very hard for us to hear.
Do I need to start over?
You just have to yell at us. Just yell.
Can you hear me? Rusty?
I'm not sure the microphone's on completely. I'm not hearing any tapping Suzanne.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
She's got Verizon.
Just yell at us, Jeff.
I can't. Okay, you can hear me now. I can, yeah, I can hear. Okay. On that 180 days when I was talking about the states, I just want to clarify that. We have researched states where long-term and year-round campgrounds. RV parks stays over 180 days is allowed. Okay, so that's almost every state west of the Mississippi. So I want to talk about the people who stay in the RV park. They're not trailer trash. And sometimes I get the impression from people. That they think that we're running some kind of a subpar RV park. But the people who stay in our RV park. Now and in the past have been nurses and traveling nurses. We have an EMT in there right now, pharmacy techs, folks who work from home. A contract dentist who he was over in Cripple Creek for a year contract. And didn't renew his contract and left. A regional manager for a large fast food chain. Caris Bible students, which they will not be able to stay at all. They'll just go somewhere else. We have a retired Woodland Park police officer. Folks waiting for their new home to be built. Prospectors, retirees living on social security. Retirees enjoying the full RV lifestyle, a mechanic. A 93-year-old lady who baked cookies for others in the park. She's since moved to assisted living. A fishing guide, a retail store manager back here. Folks who work in the service industry, restaurants, grocery stores and retail. And they would certainly classify as workforce housing. We have 20% of our customers, and I might get in trouble on this, that are single women. Who stay because they like the feet, they like to feel safe in the RV park lifestyle. Folks who can pay $550 a month for a lot rent. Instead of 1,300 a month for a small one-bedroom apartment. Our tenants are self-reliant and want the freedom that the RV living can bring. They don't want it to be tied down to a mortgage or a long-term lease. These folks can pick up and leave whenever they want. When we had the forest fire in Waldo Canyon. We evacuated the park in about a, an hour. You can't do that in the house. So, you know, and that's, that's all I, I have a lot more that in subsequent meetings I'd like to address, but. That's all I got for for now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin.
Thank you.
Vicky Houston.
All right, here we go.
And little Houston.
My shadow would be following me. My name is Vicky Houston. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak. I am a single mom. That's why he's here with me tonight.
And he's done wonderful. He's been here all evening.
Thank you. We have been homeschooling for a year practicing, so. Thanks to COVID for that. Again, I am a single mom. I have lived at Bristlecomb for six years. Actually, when I was pregnant, I first moved in due to some situations in my, my life at the time. I would love to leave Woodland Park and not be living in an RV. However, that's the situation that I'm in currently. I am working on getting my Realtor license. I am a social media marketer who works from home. So I do have goals and I am working towards getting us somewhere else. However, this is where we are right now. And I would kindly request that if we could leave the temporary status of what it currently is to where it is and leave it as is, that would be great. For myself and many other long-term residents. The lady I was with here earlier has been at Bristlecombe nearly eight years, so a few years more than myself. So there are quite a few of us who are here and asking that maybe we might just leave it as is if possible. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for patiently waiting, too. Do you have anyone else?
We do, ma'am. Tina Holquist.
Okay.
Is Tina Holquist here? Okay. And then, Michael, you are on this topic as well, or something different?
Yeah, I can speak on this.
So, Michael Dalton.
Or anything, because it's open.
It's open, right?
Right.
Yeah, so, one thing I wanted to clarify, too. If you load these meetings to YouTube, YouTube transcribes them for you. You can, whoever's the admin can actually copy that down and spit that right over to you. Nobody has to type. There might be some discrepancies if you say fudge, it might be something else. On the hundred and eighty days campsite, campgrounds, I've heard a couple of things. I'd like to address one word that the gentleman has used throughout his speech today, and that was they stay there. They do not live there. And there's a difference between staying in Woodland Park and living in Woodland Park. And I am feel so bad for single mothers, for people who are being affected by this, who haven't taken advantage of it. Because this is a political issue, because a bully snuck his way in on council by taking this loophole and saying he lived in a campground. So, I apologize to the campground owners and the people who live there and have lived there and have been a part of this community in, in a, in a graceful and, and have made this community a better place. But there are people who have taken advantage of those campgrounds. Lest we forget, there were convicts living in a campground who brought national media here that ran and hid in a campground amongst just good people. There are convicts living in our campgrounds today that have snuck up on this council, and they're trying to take over this town, and I apologize to the campground owners for those crooks. And for the record, can this go on the record in, in more than just Michael Dalton spoke? Thank you, Tony Perry, for speaking up for this town. Thank you, Tony Perry, for the articles they want to remove off the record because it makes Mr. Jim Path look bad, and we all joke about it. This is our town, and I'm tired of bullies. I'm tired of the bully on here, and you know what? I don't even get along with all these people, but I want to thank Jim Path for waking me up to maybe restoring relationships with people in this town that love this town and are not here for a political move. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Hillary LaBarre, you've been doing an awesome job as Mayor Pro Tem, and the real late Mayor Levy would be proud of you.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. Sure.
I think he was addressing the Texas Seven.
Yes.
And I think it wasn't an RV, RV park.
Right.
But I think we would have figured out if there were seven men living in an RV park, something's not right.
That's very observant of you. Right.
They were in one unit over there, okay?
I understand.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, we just really wouldn't allow that. Typically, there's, the occupancy is one or two people.
Right.
Not seven men.
Right.
Okay.
Right, and I believe they were staying in the apartment units over there, at, what is now Peakview Park, by a long time ago.
It was a unit, because-
Yeah, one of the units. Was it an RV?
It was an RV.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we, and the business owner who owned that park still is a, is a business owner in this town. But the deal is, is they stay at your place. They do not live there.
Okay.
That's the difference, because the, 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 the political scandal has brought this-
This is out of order.
This is out of order. Mr. Dalton, we're gonna have to come back to order here, so.
So, that's all I got to say.
Thank you for clarifying.
We, if, if there's many, many people.
Yes.
We don't allow that.
Right. Right, there's an occupancy limitation to each unit.
Bar, are you-
Kam LaBar.
Hang on one second, Councilmember Alfieri. Suzanne?
Are you going to take, um, I do have one citizen that's raised their hand.
Sure.
It's Norma Engelberg from the Courier. Would you allow her to speak?
Yes.
Rob, can you let her in, please?
Councilmember Alfieri, just one moment. We have one more person who wants to speak. I can't see the screen, so if you could let me know, is she ready?
She's ready.
Okay.
Okay, um, this is about the, uh, some of the questions that, uh, Mr. Zuluaga said about statistics. I did a very quick search while he was talking about statistics on fires in RVs, and the National Fire Prevention Association says that there are about twenty thousand RV fires each year. And then also, there was another source, and there's probably more, that said that a crosswind can knock over an RV if it's only fifty-three miles per hour. We get a lot of winds that are a lot higher than that. And I just wanted to point that out. I have nothing to say about the occupancy. I do not have a dog in this fight. I, I live in the Springs. I live in a house. I have lived in mobile homes, and they are tied down. And there were way too many of us in that mobile home, but, you know, that was what it was. Anyway, I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Engelberg, and I think that Councilmember Zuluaga was asking for statistics specifically to our location.
Correct, Norma. I was, uh, looking for statistics for Woodland Park.
Yeah. Statistics can happen anywhere. It doesn't have to be, be, it could be, never happen in Woodland Park until next week.
Until it happens.
That's how it works.
Thank you, Mrs. Engelberg. I'm going to go ahead and go back to Councilmember Alfieri, because she had something she wanted to say.
Yes, I just wanted to comment on what Mr. Baldwin had said. I appreciate his comments. I believe all our RV business owners have the best intentions for their business and their properties and the people that live there. I absolutely believe that the Texas Seven was a one-off situation that no one could have anticipated. And the difference between staying and living in an RV park, I myself have traveled for a few years. I understand what it is, what it looks like, what it encompasses. And I appreciate Mr. Baldwin and the other RV owners who recognize the same as people who have indoctrinated themselves into the communities that they're a part of. The difference between staying and living is not a big difference, and I recognize that regardless of who is actually physically there at the RV park is someone that is a part of our community, and I don't see the difference. So, I appreciate Mr. Baldwin's comments, and I don't, I, I don't see much credit to the difference between staying and living. It's a matter of simple i- i- integration in our community, and I appreciate his comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Alfieri. Any further comments, Suzanne?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no others in the audience, we're gonna go ahead and move on to unfinished business, and there is none. So, now we're going to move on to item number eight, ordinances on initial posting. And we're going to let Kip introduce those.
Good evening, Council. I'm pleased to present ordinance on initial posting thirteen ninety-three to council tonight. This ordinance is the first time we have not increased rates in quite some time, so this is foregoing the annual adjustment. This year's annual adjustment was one point nine five percent, and we are asking council to consider ordinance thirteen ninety-three on initial posting and set the public hearing for April fifteenth, twenty twenty-one to forego the annual increase for water rates.
Thank you, Kip. Suzanne, do we have any public comment on that topic?
No, ma'am.
No hands raised. No one in the audience? All right.
So, Kip, I just want to say how understated your forego is, your resolution. I think the citizens should know that Kip has worked steadfastly to manage the water in such a way that he doesn't have the, have to raise the rates, and we don't have to, he doesn't have to bring it before us to raise the rate. So, thank you for the, forgoing of this. Kip, and I just want the community to know, you've done a, a excellent job to keep the rates down, and I would like you to indulge us to give us a perspective of how many years, when was the last rate increase? Can you kind of give people the listening, where that's been? How long we've been without a rate increase?
So, rates are adjusted annually every year based on inflation or the Consumer Price Index. The last time that staff has asked for an increase above that inflation factor was in two thousand and ten, and that was thirteen point seven percent. Before that, it was two thousand and seven, so we've basically been keeping up with inflation for the last eleven years and doing well with that. I would also say that tap fees or tap sales have increased a little bit, which has helped us as well. So, our fund balance is healthy enough to withstand the capital debt that we would like to go into the future and as well as pay cash for those capital improvements. So, it's very exciting.
I'd just like to, to expand on that. In two thousand and ten, when that large increase happened, that's when we discussed and implemented the annual inflationary increases so that we wouldn't have to incur such a large, or the citizens wouldn't have to incur such a large increase all at once. And it seems to have worked the way it was intended.
Very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kip. Can I get a motion to-
I will. I will make a motion to consider ordinance, well, to, yeah. Consider ordinance thirteen ninety-three.
Approved.
To approve.
Approved.
Yeah, that's right. I knew I was, had the wrong word there.
Whenever I read it, I do the same.
To approve ordinance number thirteen ninety-three, series twenty twenty-one. On first reading, amending chap, chapter thirteen point eight of the municipal code establishing water rates for the year twenty twenty-one.
At the public hearing for, for fourteen, fifteen.
I don't have that part here, but I can add that to it, yes.
I'll second.
I think I heard someone on Zoom.
Councilmember Neil did.
Never mind.
Case?
Yes.
LaBar?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Path?
Yes.
Zuluaga?
Yes.
Alfieri?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Now, we're going to move on to eight B, and we're going to let Laura introduce that for us.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem LaBar. I'm just gonna pull up a very brief PowerPoint presentation. All right, item eight B on the agenda is consideration of ordinance number thirteen ninety-four, series twenty twenty-one, to vacate the common lot line and easement between lots one and two, Paradise of Colorado filing number four, with an address of three twenty-one and three thirty-one, Thunder Ridge Drive in Woodland Park, as requested by Mark Two LLC. Mark McNabb is the applicant and is here tonight, and North Peak Properties LLC, who is the property owner currently in the suburban residential SR Zone District, and sched, scheduled the public hearing for April fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. These two lots, as shown on the screen, are located where there is that red dot in the east- Yep. On the east half of the city of Woodland Park. And the applicant, these are the two lots that are depicted in your staff report. The applicant is proposing to vacate the common lot line between lots one and two, as you see here, and the adjacent five-foot easement on either side of lot one. And so, before you, staff does recommend approval of ordinance thirteen ninety-four, series twenty twenty-one, to vacate that lot line and those easements. Tonight, we're here for the first reading of this ordinance. Thank you. Any questions?
Council, any questions? Any questions from our online council? Any questions from the public?
No, ma'am.
All right, can I get a motion to consider ordinance thirteen ninety-four?
I'll move to approve ordinance thirteen ninety-four, series twenty twenty-one, as presented, and set the public hearing for April fifteenth. Second.
I second.
For the record, I will just say out loud, I think I heard Mayor Pro Tem second that.
I did.
Okay. LaBar?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Path?
Yes.
Zuluaga?
Yes.
Alfieri?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
All right, we're gonna move on to item nine A. And do we have anyone, any hands up for that, any?
First, we're gonna have Laura.
Yeah, okay, so. Nine A will be to consider sub-two thousand and twenty-one dash O two Brecken Heights Final Platte. And Laura's gonna introduce us to that. This is a quasi-judicial hearing, so I'm gonna go ahead and read in the quasi-judicial rule. Please, council members, use of electronics devices to access materials relevant to the public hearing before us. The sentence reads weird, I'm sorry. Use of electronic devices to access the materials relevant to the public hearing before us. Be assured that it is the common practice of the city council that these devices are not being used for texting, emailing, or other communications during public hearings.
Written by an attorney.
It's an odd sentence.
Maybe our new, new attorney will reread it.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem LaBar. So, I'd like to open the meeting tonight. It is April twenty, April first, twenty twenty-one. It is the City Council Public Hearing on the Brecken Heights Final Platte. The Planning Commission considered this final platte on March eleventh, twenty twenty-one. It is a request by Brecken Heights LLC applicant, and actually, yep, no, that's right. He's got a few different LLCs, but this one tonight, for this case, is Brecken Heights LLC, not Brecken Hills LLC. He is also the applicant, and Mark McNabb is the property owner. It is to plat thirteen point zero nine acres into a four-lot subdivision at one-nine-five-six-nine East U.S. Highway twenty-four into the, in the multifamily suburban MFS and the community commercial CC zone districts. And the little vicinity map you see in the upper corner here, the green dot shows the location of this final platte. It's in the southeast quadrant of the city, immediately adjacent to Highway twenty-four. So, this aerial shows you the thirteen point nine acre site. This council will recall that just recently, we dealt with the preliminary platte on this site, and the first phase of development that this applicant is going through is to plat this, to plat the entire perimeter of this, of this unplatted lot into four lots, and then to further plat the lots into townhomes and, um, parkland dedication in the north end and commercial sites adjacent to Highway twenty-four. So, this is simply a four-lot subdivision, and to plat this acreage into four plots. And these are some of the existing conditions. Both of these are views looking into the site from Highway twenty-four. And this is looking for a morning sun into the, from, from morning sun looking north into the site, so from the south boundary of the site. Gives you an idea of some of the topography and, and the land characteristics of the area that we're talking about today. This is the two thousand and ten comprehensive plan, and the area that we're talking, the thirteen acres, is shown in that green cloud. So, the east half, or the east two-thirds actually of the site, is designated as multifamily residential, and the acreage next to the highway is designated as commercial on the comprehensive plan. And this is the zoning for the site. And this is the zoning for the site. You can see that the east two-thirds of the property is zoned multifamily residential suburban MFS, and the community commercial abuts the highway in our zoning map. So, this is the approved preliminary platte that was just recently approved. It showed the location of the platte for the townhomes that you see on the east two-thirds, roughly, in tract A, and then it shows tract B, which is the parkland dedication, and then it shows tract C, which follows the community commercial zone district. So, that was the preliminary platte, and this is what the draft final platte looks like. It pretty much follows that preliminary platte, except that it cut lot tract C, which is the adjacent commercial property next to Highway twenty-four, it cuts that into two lots instead of one lot. So, you see lot one, which is the townhome platte for the duplex units that he's proposing here, which was approved for the preliminary platte. Lot two is the parkland dedication, and lot three and four fall within the CC zone district. And then, the boundary of this entire subdivision is as shown on this platte. So, staff did a review pursuant to Title seventeen subdivisions in our municipal code. We looked at the final platte requirements as drawn. We looked at whether or not an improvement guarantee was required, and for this purpose, for this four-lot subdivision is not required. We looked at the design standards for the four lots, whether or not they're feasible for building and easements, et cetera, and we also looked at improvements, and with a four-lot platte as proposed by this applicant, there are no improvements proposed at this time. There will be significant improvements with the townhome plating of lot one. The platte as proposed for four lots does comply with our subdivision regulations. We did refer this draft final platte to different agencies, both internal and external, we, to the city departments, we referred it to the public works departments, the city engineer, utilities, parks, and recreation. We also referred it to external agencies, Northeast Teller County Fire Protection District, IRA Black Hills Century Link, TDS Telecom. When they did mention any concerns, we did incorporate them into the revised platte that you see before you today, but really, there were no concerns expressed by any of these agencies. We have posted posters onsite to notify the public of tonight's meeting, and we also sent out adjacent property owner letters to everyone within a hundred and fifty feet of the site, and we published tonight's meeting in the Pike's Peak Courier, all pursuant to our requirements in the municipal code. No public comment, concerns were expressed, although members did, a few people did come to the planning commission meeting, but I don't see the same people here tonight, so. And all of the comments made by the public that came to the planning commission meeting were reflected in the meeting minutes from the planning commission. So, we did not refer this final four-lot platte to the Parks Recreation and Advisory Board. They were highly involved in the preliminary platte and did recommend and are willing to accept the dedication of the parkland portion, lot two, and that will be done with the townhome platte, and there's no concerns, and that will be a parkland dedication in lieu of fees. So, the planning commission did review at their public hearing on March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one, this final platte, and unanimously did approve and recommended that the city council approve this final platte. So, tonight, we're here on April first, two thousand and twenty-one, for the final platte approval by city council. The city council can table if they need more information, can deny the final platte with reasons that must be noted, or can approve the final platte subject to any modifications. Staff does recommend approval of the Brecken Heights Four-Lot Final Platte of thirteen point zero-nine acres, based on the findings of conformance to the subdivision regulations and approved preliminary platte as described in the staff report and as presented at public hearings. So, we do have the applicant, Mr. Mark McNabb, here tonight, and I am available to answer any questions. That concludes my report. Mayor Protim.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
I have one. Lot three, is there, what's the plan for that? Just curious, as it was set aside?
Lot three is that northern end of the CC zone district. It's zoned community commercial, so there are many uses that would accommodate community commercial.
Sure.
And it is also, as a conditional use, it could be residential.
I was just wondering if there was a specific reason that it was separated away from lot four at this point, as far as a plan for it?
So, I would defer to the applicant for him to come up, but the reason that they gave me was because they could.
Oh, well, there you go.
He can explain that further.
I just was, it was just curious.
Mr. McNabb, do you want to?
Okay.
I'm Mark McNabb, live in forty-nine sixty-one, County Road twenty-five, Woodland Park.
Excuse me, Mark. You can lift that mic up.
Okay.
They're online, Ken.
So, one of the reasons why we decided to do that, at first, we were just going to have one big piece, but we have a division there, you see, between the two lots. One, that's a trail going into the city park that we're dedicating, and we're also have a right-in and right-out C dot entry off Highway twenty-four there.
Okay.
So, it made sense, since we're going to put a paved trailhead for parking there, that we separate the two pieces, because if we try to put a building there, it wouldn't work.
Perfect. Thank you. That's exactly what I thought. Thanks.
Are there any online council members that have a question?
No, I'm very comfortable with the presentation and what I've seen. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Path Ralphieri?
All good.
Okay. Councilmember Ralphieri? Is she there?
I can't answer that.
Oh.
Right.
Okay. Well, we're going to move on, then.
Sure.
So, I really like this development, but I have a niggling thing in my mind about this, and that is, I love the fact that you're dedicating park space. I like that trails. That's very impressive. I just am aware that what cities are doing, and I'm not saying we have to do this with this property, I'm just kind of putting the comment there, that, like, for example, in El Paso County, when a developer develops an area, they do have to have an open space, and rather than the city taking it on as an expense, it becomes a requirement that the community, that the development, has its own maintenance of that parkland. And, I mean, this is a small park, as far as our community goes, but the point that I'm going to bring out to my fellow city council members and to staff is, the cost involved, and I know that we didn't have costs when we talked about this back in, was it March? When did we talk about this? Whenever it was on the docket, what the cost would be, but I see parks here welcoming it in. Do we have any numbers yet on, from the Parks Department, that says what this is likely to cost the city?
So, there is a number, and I don't have it with me, Councilmember Zuluaga, but there is a direct fee in terms of what you can submit in terms of the development, and it relates to either paying a fee for the land for park, and what that fee would translate into in terms of land versus money, or the, just the dedication of the land. This development had the opportunity and the acreage to dedicate land, and that was the choice they made. But I can, when we talk about, I can get you the actual number. I just don't have the right file with me. It was all done with the preliminary platte.
I recall it was about, just a little over three thousand dollars a year, so it wasn't really huge. And, you know, just a comment on what you were saying, the concern I would have is that if it's not dedicated to the city, then it's not available to the public. If it's privately held or privately maintained, then it would not be available to the public.
Good point.
So, I think this has, it goes up, it's a, it goes up in elevation, and when you get up to the top, it's got amazing views. So, it, I think it provides an amenity to our folks that is worth the three grand a year. Would you agree?
I like your perspective.
Thank you. I just want to butt in quickly and say I see our city attorney would like to make a comment.
Just if we, because this is a quasi-judicial hearing, we want to create a record for what we're speaking about, and I, it's better to discuss policy changes and outside the hearing, just for the fairness of everything.
Thank you.
And Counselor Zuluaga, just so that you know, there is common open space within tract A, which will be maintained and managed by the homeowners association that will be established, as will maintenance of this road, private road, and this range. It will be all private.
I do have a question.
Councilmember Neil?
Yes. Laura, I know you don't have the exact number. Mr. Zuluaga's question, though, did trigger, is our current budget sufficient, and we do not expect an increase in the future from this small tract being added to the burden of the city maintaining it? Did you factor that in?
Yes. When the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board looked at it, those are some of the criteria that they look for, they will accept parkland, and they do believe that they can accept this and that there won't be a high cost. It will be more of a passive park. There's no active part to it. The trail will be built by the developer, and it will connect existing park to the east and the sidewalk along US twenty-four, and it's just that trail, really, and the developers also promised some picnic tables, I believe it was.
Yeah, we're also supposed to apply the fire.
And, yes, they will be mitigating, because this is a well-treed site, tract B is, and so it will be limbed and mitigated pursuant to their wildfire mitigation plan.
Thank you. And again, Mr. Zuluaga, I thought it was a good question, because our previous city attorney, Jason Myers, had expressed concerns about the free land that the city has taken on sometimes isn't so free. So, it's good to have that clarification from you, Laura. Thank you.
All right. Councilmembers, any other questions? Seeing and hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and ask for a motion to approve.
Let's open up the public comment.
Oh, yeah. Is there any?
There isn't, but we just have to.
Right. I do it every time. I always ask first and forget later. So, I don't see any audience members that have questions. Suzanne, there are no online hands?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So, now, I'm going to ask for a motion.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve sub-two thousand and twenty-one dash zero-two Brecken Heights Final Platte as presented by Brecken Hills, as requested and presented by Brecken Hills LLC and Mark McNabb to subdivide thirteen point zero-nine acres into four lots in the southwest, one-quarter of section thirty, T one-two, I think it's a five. Tangent, one-two south dash R sixty-eight dash W six PM in the multifamily residential suburban and community commercial zones as presented.
I second the motion.
Thank you. Neil?
Yes.
Path?
Yes.
Zuluaga?
Yes.
Alfieri?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Great. And it's not nine yet.
Awesome.
So, we're going to go ahead and move on to number ten, new business. We have none. I think we're going to move on to reports, and I'll go ahead and start, and I only have one event to report, and that will be Saturday, April tenth. It will be the Dive in movie at the Aquatic Center from four-thirty to six-thirty, and that sounds exciting. Wondering if they're playing Jaws, and we can all sit on floats.
Very clever.
And that's all I have for this evening. I'm going to go ahead and move on to Councilmember Case.
Thank you. I'd just like to bring to the attention, if folks have electronic recycling items, anything that plugs in, or shredding, that Keller Williams here in town, in conjunction and partnership with the city, is starting to organize and coordinate the annual recycling event, which will be the third Saturday in July. I'll let you know what the number is in a minute. Anyway, I just wanted to give the community a heads up so that they can save those items and keep them out of the landfill. Thank you.
And then we'll move on to the new.
We're doing reports, is it?
Yes.
Oh, goodie. Golly. Okay. So, we received an email with regards to the DDA this week, and so, to address that, just for everybody's information.
We don't read, correspond that into the record.
No, I'm a DDA rep.
Sorry to interrupt you.
I had to prepare. Oh, I'm not going to read the email. No, 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 no. But I will, for reference, talk.
Thank you.
Oh, no, 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 no. Okay. Progress from the DDA. Progress.
You can address the question that was raised, but you don't want to read the email.
No, 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 I wasn't intending.
Right. So, have at it. You're doing.
Now that we have all that clear, "Taxpaying citizens of Woodland Park deserve a publicly presented update on how the thirty thousand dollar appropriation has been spent and disclose details on the DDA's progress to date." So, you may recall last council meeting, I did give a progress on what's happening at the DDA, a three-pronged approach. But you'll be pleased to know the DDA board has done its part to facilitate developer interest in Woodland Station and is ready, willing, and able to proceed with development plans if and when the private parties are ready to proceed. This ball is in the court of private individuals we've negotiated with, and the DDA remains positioned to further facilitate the project if and when those parties wish to proceed. So, with an answer to the thirty thousand dollar appropriation that is approved in the budget, the public at large should be happy to know the DDA board has spent none of the funds budgeted for Woodland Station improvement. All those funds are held, as we discussed, for expenditures if and when the appropriate, and since the private parties are not yet ready to proceed, the DDA board has not yet authorized the expenditure of even a single penny. So, the focus of the DDA at this point is, all right, the developer hasn't chosen to execute on the timestamp on that proposal and contract, so we're going, well, how can we best move the ball along? And so, there's a three-pronged approach. As I said last council meeting, the, one of the DDA members has been authorized to approach realtors to list the property. Don't hold me to it, but I think three realtors were approached, and because of the complexity of the piece of property is and the constraints on its sale and its development, that has, no realtor has said they want to take that. That's one prong. The second prong is, of course, the investor, and the investor is continuing to show interest but hasn't executed on it. And the third prong is, just as in the sale of a residential property, residence properties are staged for the best opportunity for buyers to look at it and see its potential, DDA is in the process, and we'll be discussing this coming meeting, discussing how to utilize materials that are already held with the city, trees, boulders, gravel, or some sort of, sort of, pack material to put on walkways and to make the property usable whilst we're looking and waiting for the right investor to come along. And in fact, Councilmember Case suggested last week of having the bikers for veterans to have an event, so.
I can tell you that there aren't many bikers that come to that event that are going to be camping, but they will be filling all the hotel, motels, hotels, in and around our area. So, just a heads up there, but I do know there's some. So just, just a heads up there. But I do know there's some noise out there from some folks I know that have some ideas that have been communicated to one of your board members. And so there is some ideas, and so she'll, she's in communication, and we'll see what happens.
Yeah, and that's the whole point of it. This is really just to create a facelift in the area to say, hey, there's a space. If you want to have an event, want to do something with it, while we're waiting for an investor who's got all the pieces together and their vision together and their, their ducks in a row, that we're moving forward to do something with them instead of just letting it sit and sit and sit and sit. So that's the DDA report. And I have to confess that the Main Street report, I was unable to attend this week. So I only have hearsay report, and I'll just hold off on it.
All right.
That's all.
I'll help you and know that they have posted and have been advertising for filling empty seats on that group. So if anyone's interested, I've seen that on several emails and Facebook and different things. So I do know they're looking for volunteers to serve.
Well, you've triggered my memory. There is one other thing I remember in talking about it. There is grant money from CDOT, and I don't understand how possibly Main Street's able for it, but they're, they are looking at it. They've worked with Adola a great deal over the last probably six weeks, two months, to really find fresh ways on how to, to bring some other resources. So anyway, they're looking at that, and I can't tell you the details because it's just hearsay, but.
All right, we're going to go ahead and move to councilmember Alfieri.
Mayor Protem.
Yes, councilmember.
Before we leave the DDA thing.
Sure.
And without reading that letter, Mr. Path and myself were called out in the letter because we had voted the $30,000, but we wanted to see significant progress by the end of March. Can we actually get somebody from the DDA to come back so we can ask some follow-up questions? In other words, probe a little bit deeper into the progress? I would like to see progress more than what I'm seeing, actually.
Councilmember Zuluaga can raise that at the next.
Can you ask?
And he can invite a member to come.
Yes, Rusty, DDA will be meeting on Tuesday here in council chambers. So you're welcome to bring questions or yourself before the DDA.
What time is it? Is that that morning, 7:30?
7:30, right, right. You have to bring your own coffee, though.
Oh, shoot.
And councilmember, councilmember Neil, if you would like a member from the DDA to come and present, we can ask that on our next agenda, and we can let the DDA know and our liaison that it would be nice if you could invite a member to come and speak to those numbers for us.
Well, I think that's very timely. I think that whole thing's very timely because that's been my recommendation as well to the DDA, so.
Great.
If we can just, I'll bring it to the meeting on Tuesday, and if it's all right, we'll get Suzanne to put it on, on the calendar if all the parties are, are willing to do that, so.
And may I ask that, I will come to that, Robert, with you, but that means I'm kind of asking other council members to let us know if there'll be a third so that we can post it, because, Robert, that's a great idea. I can attend.
Well, it is. It's, it's already posted meeting.
Roger.
Meeting, well, that's the attorney. Is there any open meeting violations if more than two councilmembers go to the DDA meeting?
But I think in that circumstance, it's, it's okay.
We posted us on our council's behalf as well.
Okay, it's already done the correct way.
So it's fine, yeah.
You have a great city clerk, by the way. She does everything.
That's perfect. Then, Robert, I'll join you at the 7:30 on Tuesday.
By the way, the recycling, e-recycling and shredding event is July 17th. Thank you.
Where?
Where? Repeat where?
Well, where is to be determined. But, and I, I don't have that on a calendar, but I did find the calendar, and it is July 17th, and I will keep you posted. Absolutely.
Isn't it much better being back in person?
It's more fun.
I'm sorry the other three aren't here this evening. Let's go ahead and move to councilmember Alfieri for her report.
Thank you. So two things. Yes, I will be the third council member in attendance at the DDA meeting. So just to make sure we're in full publication of the fact that we'll have three of us, I certainly would be interested in knowing what sort of progress you would expect from the DDA. I think they've been a little hesitant in moving forward with spending funds because of the fact that they're not sure how council would or would not approve of the expensive funds for DDA. So although they would like to spend money to improve the property, there's been some concern about whether or not council would approve of those. So hopefully that's something we can figure out within council and DDA. Secondly, there's been a lot of talk lately over this rebranding campaign of the city, the city logo, and what all that goes into, the cost of it, where that money is coming from. So I was hoping to get a little more information from our city manager, Michael Lawson, that could share with council and the citizens about what this all entails, where that money's coming from, how much money is being spent, and what that looks like. Because I have seen a number of questions that even I, as a council member, do not have the information to answer right now.
Sure. Yeah, I can do that for you. So we launched a question to the community, I think, on Monday, asking folks to look at a new city logo and a color palette. We called it rebranding. It's really just constricted to that visual identity. Rebranding is usually a lot more than that. Excuse me. So there have been no costs incurred so far this year. That work was initiated back in 2019 as part of, I think it was part of the strategic plan work. I'm not entirely sure.
It was.
It was. And so those, those costs were sunk back in 2019. And that was put on the shelf, I think, due to COVID, and there was a lot of other stuff going on at that time. So at this point, we, we had a logo, we had different palettes. And so looking at a new comp plan, we felt that there was a nexus between a refreshed comp plan and a refreshed logo, visual identity for the city, and that's why we brought it forward at this time. There will be maybe a thousand, $2,000 more dollars associated with completing that work with the consultant. And that's it in terms of the design. And then we would be, over time, over the span of several years, we would be changing out our current branding with the new brand as assets need to be replaced, things wear out, stationary is depleted, so on and so forth.
So at this point, you said there's about $1,000 to $2,000 that need to complete the plan as well as over the extending years for additional outchanges. I think about our directional signs that are on the highway with our city branding. What is the, the negative to us stopping this branding campaign? And how much money we can save by simply continuing on with the logos and the existing branding that we have? Is there any downside to us?
Cut in real quick and let councilmember Alfieri know, this was a decision that had been made by previous council back when Mayor Levy was in position. So this was something that had been voted upon and budgeted by previous council. It had just sat on the sidelines for quite some time. This was not a new decision, and the money had already been allocated to that project.
And I stand, but if.
Would have to be a new item on agenda and a new resolution.
Mayor Protem Labar, I understand, but if the money is still yet to be extended by this existing council, I would like to know that. I would like to have a decision on that. And if there is still money for this city to expend for this branding campaign, I would like the information on it so that we can decide whether or not we want to expend that continued money for it.
And does this council want this, to direct the staff to do that?
Right. Well, this is, this is actually mayor, this is actually reports for council right now. So if that's an issue that council wants to address at a later time, it does need to be brought to agenda, and it's actually not appropriate at this moment to direct staff for any issue.
I will bring it on the next agenda.
And, and then, if I may, Ms. Alfieri, if you could reach out to me, because I had some questions myself on this one. So it takes two of us to get it on the agenda. Why don't you and I talk offline about being the two councilmembers?
That would be great.
Councilmember Neil, I appreciate that.
Councilmember Alfieri, do you have any further information to report?
Nope, that's all I have at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Neil?
On, on council reports, I have nothing. Keep Woodland Park Beautiful doesn't meet until next week, so I'll have something for the next one. But one comment, Michael, I just, I want to kind of calm your nerves from what I'm going to be trying to discuss with councilmember Alfieri and get on the council about the logo. I'm more concerned about, I started to take the survey, and it was very binary. It did not allow me to provide comments, and that's where I would like to go, just so you have some guidance on what I'm thinking. Thank you.
Totally agree.
That's great. So councilmember Path?
I have nothing to report.
Okay, that's great. And we're going to move on then to staff, city manager. Oh, no, I'm sorry. I skipped. I skipped over the city attorney.
I don't have anything official to report. I do apologize. I do not have a joke like Jeff. Although I guess I do.
She knew, she knew.
It's a pleasure being here for my first city council meeting, and I had a really good full day with Michael and staff, and I'm excited to be here again, and thanks for having me, but nothing official. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
The lack of a joke, we might need to reconsider our contract.
That's two weeks in a row, right?
Meld properly and so forth. That's her.
All right, city manager.
I think in the contract, they give us a nickel back every time they don't give us. We have a clawback mechanism as part of the contract.
Or popcorn and bag of chips, at least.
There we go. So I will turn it over to Sally Riley to do an update on the comp plan for us. It was a big week.
Thank you, Michael. Yes, we had an exciting week with a kickoff of the eight subcommittees meeting Monday evening and beginning to enthusiastically discuss the update to the goals, objectives, and actions for a 2030 comprehensive plan. And just very, very pleased with all the engagement and the enthusiasm for the subcommittees. Some of those subcommittees are going to meet in addition to the other three meetings that are scheduled. We will need to post those on our website as public meetings. So we'll be getting that information out to all the, all the chairpersons and the scribes. For the general public, we're planning to have a town hall meeting on Wednesday, April 14th. This will be in person at the cultural center for the first 50 or 75 folks. And then we'll also have it on Zoom, so it will be a hybrid. And the real exciting part of this is that there will be questions to the public. And on your phones, you'll answer those questions, and then the results will be tabulated just like that. So it's really all this high-tech stuff, getting good input and participation.
Are you sure it's not going to fail?
I'm pretty impressed with our consultants and their ability for the technology. And then just encourage folks, anybody, to go to the website. If you haven't answered the two questionnaires so far, please do that. And then on April 12th, we will be posting a third questionnaire, and the topic will be parks, trails, open space, and hazards, or how to create resiliency to wildfire, floods, and other issues. So go to the website, come to the town hall, and the subcommittees have rolled up their sleeves and they're working hard for the next few months. And Michael, if I may add two more things, just to give a heads up to council for the future. We have a request by Pike's Peak Regional Building Department to adopt the state electrical and plumbing codes. So our board of review is meeting on that on the 15th. And the first reading of that ordinance will hit your agenda on May 6th. Because we are adopting by reference other codes, it does have to be published for a longer period of time. So the public hearing will be set for June 3rd. So that's the first thing. And then second, a heads up that the Teller County Hazard Mitigation Plan has been adopted or updated. This is required by the state every five years for Teller County to do this. It also is required for the local governments to adopt it. And that is necessary in order to be eligible for FEMA disaster funds. So it's really important. It's a very lengthy document, very meaty, and I do want to get that into your hands as soon as possible and then have a resolution on the agenda for May 6th, no, May 6th. So I'll get that link out to you so that you can peruse the Teller County Hazard Mitigation Plan. The most important part is actually at the very end, 140 pages, which has the goals for each community. There are nine goals for the city. And I have, I, I'm presenting this, but we really have to thank our police department for the work that they did with Dawn and Jill and in putting this together. So just two heads up on the building codes and the hazard mitigation plan.
Great. Sally, I have a question for you. With the subcommittees, are we done taking volunteers, or if people would still be interested, may they still participate in the committees?
Thank you for that question. They, we have a little bit of room in most of the subcommittees. However, transportation and drainage is now full.
Okay.
We especially could use help in the community wellbeing, which is health, education, recreation, and aging in place.
Okay.
So yes, if anybody is interested in joining a subcommittee, reach out and we'll get them assigned.
Okay. And then I would strongly encourage council with the, with the regional building change for plumbing and electric, that you either meet with Sally to review what those changes are. Or if you know builders or are associated with builders, that you call them and ask them what their experiences with it, what they anticipate happening, and how they anticipate changing their business. We, we, Kelly and I were on council when regional adopted new building codes also. And it is a lengthy and in-depth topic that if you are not familiar with, it's important that you get educated on the topic to make the right decisions. And I don't mean to keep looking this way. It's every which way. I.
It's okay.
I'm familiar with them because I deal with them on a, on a daily basis. So I feel like I have a grounding and an understanding in what's coming and what's happening. And I have no opinion either way. I just think that it's a, a heavy topic to wrap your mind around if it's something that you're not dealing with on a daily basis. So it's good to either go see Sally. I'd recommend seeing Sally, but also if you know builders, and we'll have a public hearing. And, and if council would feel that they need a workshop on that session, I would appreciate hearing that feedback so that I know, so that everyone can feel comfortable with the decisions that. decisions that they're making. So, and also on the emergency mitigation, if you need a workshop so you understand or just at least go get brushed up with it with Sally. So I see, I see you have a question back there. Normally, we don't take statements, but go ahead, I'll, I'll let you just briefly, because you know what I'm talking about, so.
Yeah, I still have the, this is Matt McVicker. I still have the scars from the adoption in 2018 of the 2015 case.
Right.
But I would like to explain to everybody why these two come up every three years. Of all the building trades in the state of Colorado, there's only two that have state licenses.
Right.
Plumbers and electricians at their various apprentice, journeyman, master levels. The, the state engineers office adopted a few years ago the practice of mandating acceptance of the latest code for both the NEC, the National Electrical Code, and the IPC, the International Plumbing Code. Other code sections of the ICC can be adopted at will by the building jurisdiction at any time. So the other codes are adopted typically in Pike's Peak Regional every six years.
Right.
But we have no choice but to at least look and accept most of what these changes are that are coming, and it's every three years.
Right, right. So he just, he just solidified, it's difficult, it is, it is an important topic and you need to have your mind wrapped around it before you vote for it.
We only have about 440 changes to the NEC.
Right.
Oh, sheesh. Well, I remember the last ones we had were in plumbing. If I remember correctly, it was the amount of air exchange that goes through the building per hour.
Yeah, that, that was the International Energy Conservation Code.
Right, and, and I think it increased the price of a house by, was it, I forget the number, maybe 12,000, maybe $15,000.
It wasn't that high just for that part, but some of the other things that we had to adopt
Right.
For insulation and stuff, nonetheless, did add some cost to a typical home.
Correct.
And if I may, Mr. McVicker, if I could ask if you've had an opportunity to review these changes and what your opinion is on them, if you would support city council adopting these changes or support city council opposing these changes?
So I'm intimately familiar with the changes to the NEC because they have been in effect for over a year.
And I'm just, I'm going to interrupt you real quick. So for council reports, I'm going to recommend that if you are interested in his opinion, to please go visit with him. Or he's welcome to come back during a session where we have public hearing.
And I agree with that, but I would like the public to hear this.
Well, he can, he will have his opportunity when we have the hearings.
Mr. McVicker, I highly encourage you to come back and share your opinions with council because I think I would agree with you wholeheartedly on the opposition of these further regulations to building requirements.
Don't think that's his stance.
I'll be back at the next council meeting.
That's not his stance.
So your question brings up another question for me for Sally.
Sure.
Yeah, so Sally, I, I went to the, admittedly, I got there late, I missed the introductions, but I, I was dismissed to my classroom for the subcommittee. I asked a question on the call which concerned me with the answer I got, and I said, is this being recorded? And the answer is no. We have, if, if the numbers, and tell me if my numbers are wrong, but I thought when we did the last comprehensive plan for Woodland Park, there was like 120 people engaged in the process. And this time, it's like 50 or 60. Is that accurate?
No, because the town hall is where we will have many, many people engaged and that will be recorded and posted.
So
So the subcommittee work is for those folks who really want to do the deep dive into those topics.
Well, Mike, so I get that.
And there'll be about 70 people overall in the subcommittees.
Okay.
And then with the town hall, we could have 150 additional people. So we'll have over 200.
So that's great. I'm, I'm glad we're getting more people coming into it. My concern is that I know that we were each asked what subcommittee we'd like to be part of. And I think we all wanted to be part of way more than what we were assigned to. And thank you for giving us an assignment. But that didn't stop my interest in the other subcommittees. And the fact that none of that foundational work has been recorded concerns me about open meetings and the whole open disclosure. Why, I mean, it seems so common. I, I'm just surprised that it hasn't been recorded. And so I want you to take that back to the, the people. And my second concern is that when I had the one-on-one interview, I was told that, oh yeah, this is on a fast track of six months. This normally takes 12 months. So my question is, why are we rushing this? Why, what, what, what's the need to rush this process and not have folks an opportunity to really deliberate over it? It's great that a few key people are getting together on the subcommittees, but there's other of us who would like to know what's happening in each of those before it gets to the point of, of, of finalization. So can you comment on that, please?
If we need to slow down and do things a little bit slower pace, we can look at that. But this is a big project that will also include a review of the zoning regulations. So it was trying to get it done in a, in a year. The comp plan process is six months, and then the review of the zoning regs is another six months.
So I have a question. Was the work session earlier tonight recorded as well?
Yes.
Okay. And do we expect that most work sessions, budget sessions, to be recorded going forward?
We, we always, as one of the requirements that Mayor Carr put in his, in his tenure as mayor was that all work sessions, budget hearings, and that type are recorded.
As of when? Because that wasn't the case a year ago.
Rob, do you have an idea of how long that's been? So at least a year.
Okay, so we can expect all work sessions regardless of comp plan or budget or 180-day moratorium being reported and uploaded for citizens to see going forward?
Well, the work sessions, the official council work sessions, the official council budget sessions, I can't speak about the comp plan because that's not an official council meeting. I can only say that the official council meetings, work sessions, that kind of thing are always recorded.
This is where I would like to kind of step in for something. May I?
We could ask the city attorney as well, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, I'm going to direct this to the city attorney because I, I think I kind of hit the hornet's nest a couple days ago. When I was just talking to the, to our, to Jeff Wilson about the subcommittees. And I learned that because we're representing a, a subcommittee in one capacity that we've been assigned to, i.e. a council liaison, like I am the council liaison to the public safety and emergency management and resiliency. So I go there in that capacity, but I can attend other meetings as a citizen. But I, I learned from him that these meetings had to be posted or noticed. And I would have, that's what he told me, they had to because they are sanctioned under the city council, just like we sanction a board and a commission, and these subcommittees are sanctioned under the city council. So they have to be noticed, but don't they also have to be recorded? And if not, is it possible to get them recorded? Because if we're doing this in a six-month timeline, it's very hard to go back and attend all of the meetings that I would like to. I mean, there's a lot of topics that I, I ran for city council because I'm interested in. But I'm, I don't know if they're going to be sitting on top of each other. And I could at least go back and look at what was discussed. So I guess it's two questions, one to Nina and one to Suzanne.
Thank you, Councilmember Neil. That's a fantastic question.
So what I can answer for, and then I'll have Ms. Williams' answer. I can answer to council's procedures. I would refer you, Councilmember Ralphieri, back to your procedures where
She doesn't have that, Nina.
She doesn't have it?
She didn't have this. She wasn't on council at the time we developed them.
But you should have got it orientation. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's in, it's under recordings. It says at a minimum, the city clerk shall audio record all regular, special, and work session meetings in an archival media form. Video recordings that include audio are an acceptable alternative. So it talks about in your council procedures, it talks about us doing work sessions, all regular and special meetings. And that's Section 5G for reference. And then I'll let Ms. Williams answer what she'd like to.
Just the question about, we're not, you're not legally required to record these meetings. As you referenced in the policy, you're asking to record your city council meetings, but subcommittee meetings are not obligated to be recorded. It's up, you know, it's, it's a decision to be made, but I would say that subcommittees and sub-subcommittees are for, you know, the frank exchange of ideas and, you know, kind of thinking out loud and getting to a certain point where then you can report to council. And that's why a lot of times they're treated differently than a official council work session.
Then the question would be, is there a cost to record it, Suzanne?
It's, I mean, there's not a hard cost, it's just time. I'm looking at Sally because she knows the logistics from Logan Simpson. So I would like to defer to Sally for the answer to that. Yeah, I don't believe we can, we can record a Zoom meeting if it stays as one group. But when you split out into those works, work groups, there's not a way to record each one. But recall, the first thing we did was establish a scribe. So we do have notes from each of those subcommittees that we can make public if you would like us to do that.
Right, and like Laura's on my committee and Laura records our meetings in case somebody takes lousy notes.
And, and she did that via a, a separate recorder.
Right.
So we would, if we want to record, we will have to purchase recorders for eight groups.
But anyone who wants to record the meeting is welcome to record the meeting. It doesn't have to be a mandated thing because some of us are meeting in person also while some people are meeting in Zoom. And it's just like all the other subcommittee meetings we have, you know, where the public doesn't record their meetings unless someone individually wants to. It's not a mandated rule.
And I actually caution you against imposing obligation because that's, it sounds like it would be very hard to, for every single last subcommittee to
Right.
Record it, and then you've put in another, added another possible claim or liability against the city versus, of course, we always have to, you know, take minutes of a subcommittee pursuant to the open meetings law.
Right. I would say that, that, that these are brainstorming sessions, they are idea generating sessions to glean information from those participants. And then in the town halls, we'll expand that to even larger groups of citizens that have that opportunity to brainstorm and throw ideas out. And then the wrap-up and the piling it all together comes out and is documented in a document. And that's something that is brought forward to the council. You know, brain, it, it just seems bigger than anyone could handle, that all these subcommittees would be recorded and that anyone is going to have enough time to sit and listen to all of them. I would just suggest that trust the people that are involved. We've got, we've got people from all walks of life and all over our community that are working with staff and, and the individual council members to brainstorm ideas and try and do the best they can to bring those brilliant ideas forward into a plan.
They're primarily citizens that are participating.
They are.
We are not required to participate. You don't have to be in the meeting.
Trust the process, I would suggest, trust the process, folks.
So it doesn't need to be required to be recorded for our participation.
And enjoy it and engage it from that perspective instead of skepticism. And, and I know that you're, you have a genuine interest in what's going on and, and trust that that's going to come forward and it's going to flesh out of those sessions.
And guess what? The public can come to every single meeting. They can come.
And
Open to the public to attend. Without About transparency, they can come to the meetings and participate. But this is a, this is just a, a brainstorming public session of the public, by the public, for the public. This is for the public's sake. And no council member is required to attend, must attend, has to participate, even has to speak.
How about one, two?
So this isn't about a council
It's not about that. I, I hear your point, but I'm sorry, go ahead, Stephanie, you were trying to say something.
With all due respect to Ms. Williams and Councilmember Case, we cannot be in all places as, at once. But I would like to hear the ideas
Yes.
Come from all of our citizens. So I can't attend all of the meetings, but if they can all be recorded, I can guarantee you, I'm going to be up till midnight, 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock, listening to the recordings of all the meetings to hear all of the citizen input.
Then you can ask a friend to record in their subcommittee for yourself because otherwise the whole purpose of this is that it is conglomerated and reported back to council.
To pay for recorders for all of those committees? I'm happy to do it so that I can hear the ideas.
That's on you, that's going to be on you. I'm not going to require the city to record every single subcommittee meeting for legal purposes. And if somebody genuinely, genuinely wants to know what every single subcommittee is saying about every single issue in every single brainstorming session, it's going to be on you to figure out how to get it recorded.
Mayor
And I'm going to end this meeting. It's 9:14. This is completely off-topic now for reports, and we are done.
And
Thank you.
Not interrupting me, and I would again offer that if it requires me to pay for recording for all of these subcommittees so that myself and Councilmember Neil and council members